To this April 15, City Council Work Session. It's amended agenda, I guess you all have a green sheet in front of your seat. But before we even begin, I'm just going to give Betty a moment to tee things up for Wednesday, I guess.
Okay. You all have in front of you a resolution that I'm going to propose on, at the Wednesday council meeting about 5G. And I'll just read the heading so that people know what we're talking about. Resolution requesting the federal government to update studies on potential health risks of 5G radio frequency wireless emissions and publish findings as federal guidelines push for more rapid deployment of 5G. And you can read the whole resolution before Wednesday and my real vote at the Wednesday work session. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much for bringing that forward. Okay. The first item of business is to return to our conversation about the Riverfront Park and Plaza funding. And, correct?
Over to Michael.
Oh, I have to be, sorry. Wait a second, I have to be in Urban Renewal Agency. Excuse me. I'm closing the City Council meeting and opening a meeting of the Urban Renewal Agency. Now we're ready. Okay, so do we have a little staff reorientation to this topic before we dive in? Great.
Good evening, Mayor, City Councilors. I'm Michael Kinnison with the Community Development Division. And we're back to continue our conversation with you about funding for the Riverfront Park and Plaza, as well as some discussion about other investment opportunities in the district. We have an alternative proposal for funding that makes adjustments to the proposed mix of sources based on what we heard from the board last week for you to consider. So let's just move right to it. So today, we're going to, we're going to consider that alternative proposal. Proposal, we'll review what that means for the district financial capacity and then we'll talk a little bit about other investment opportunities. And then we have a couple of options in terms of actions for you today. If you recall this slide from last week, it outlines the Riverfront Park's costs and funding. And so initially, we had identified $9 million in current funding, and we were recommending a $5 million urban renewal investment in the park. That's the main linear park proper. What we're currently proposing for consideration is to reduce the amount of current funding that would go into the project by $3 million, and doing that by reducing the amount of park SDCs in the project and increasing the amount of the urban renewal contribution by $3 million. So the, the total park construction cost still is $14 million. The Plaza, if you recall, we were recommending an initial investment of $4 million of urban renewal funding, and that does not, we're not recommending any change in that tonight. So what does that do with the district's financial capacity? If you recall, our estimated capacity through the life of the district, which runs through 2024, is a little over $18 million. With the current proposal, we would go from investing $9 million of urban renewal dollars to investing $12 million of urban renewal dollars in the park and Plaza. And instead of leaving a little over $9 million of potential funds available for future projects in the district, it would leave a little over $6 million for future projects in the district. And just to clarify that, $6 million is what's estimated to be available after this, after funding the park for other projects through the life of the district through 2024. So we also, in addition to the park, we have some other opportunities in the district to invest, and those were outlined in your AIS last week. We've grouped those into two broad categories. First are those opportunities that have momentum, where planning is underway, or the need is clear and imminent. These projects would have a clear impact on the downtown riverfront redevelopment, and they are the Affordable Housing Project. If you recall, that was up to 75 units of affordable housing as part of the downtown riverfront project. And as we all know, with affordable housing projects, there are gaps in financing, so we're anticipating this project to have a gap as well. The steam plant, this project has, is very exciting and an iconic project, very important to the success of the riverfront, but it's a very challenging project that you will soon learn at the, later this month, when we come back to you with the team's proposal. It's a very old building. It's going to take quite a bit of investment to make that stabilize, to preserve it historically, and to provide some public uses as well. So we anticipate a gap there in that project. Parking, we already have some parking challenges in this part of downtown, in the Courthouse District, and we anticipate those challenges growing as the riverfront project develops out. And so parking is a critical piece in the success of the park as well as the steam plant. Willamette to Willamette involves one of our great streets, 8th Avenue, which is a key corridor connecting the downtown to the Courthouse District to the riverfront, particularly as the town square starts to come together, City Hall, the Courthouse development, that corridor is just going to grow and grow in importance. We've been developed, we've been investing there over the years and making that a much more pedestrian-friendly kind of gateway to the riverfront, but there's still more work to do there. And then we have the E-Web Headquarters Building, which we have expressed interest to E-Web, that we have an interest in that property, and we'll be coming back to you in the near future with a conversation about the opportunities there. And then we also have a number of other potential investments in the district that we've identified. These are, while important, contribute to the life of the district. They're not quite as, I'd say, as ripe as the other projects. There hasn't been, on some of them, maybe a lot of planning done or scoping done, so we don't really know exactly what the partnership opportunities are. But nevertheless, we know that these are coming projects of varying size and scale. What I would say is that on all of these projects, we know that the estimated, estimated financial capacity in the district isn't sufficient to do them. We know that there's, that it's not sufficient to even do the first grouping that, in blue there, that are really critical pieces to the success of the downtown riverfront. And, but at this point, we don't have any specific requests of agency funds, but we are interested in hearing from the board about your perspective on these opportunities. We're going to need help in determining how future investments should be prioritized. But today, our time is short, and we're simply requesting direction to come back, to have a more focused, in-depth conversation with you and discuss other funding strategies to continue doing good work in the district. So on to what our motions are today. We have two options presented to you. The first option is what was recommended initially last week. That was authorizing use of $5 million of Riverfront Urban Renewal Funds for the park and $4 million for the Plaza. Today, we're presenting you with an alternative of authorizing $8 million of Riverfront Urban Renewal Funds for the park and $4 million for the Plaza. And then we're also asking you to direct the agency director to come back and discuss funding strategies for other potential projects within the Riverfront Urban Renewal District. And with that, we'll leave it open to discussion.
Okay. That's great. Thank you very much for recapping that and bringing us all up to speed on this alternative. So because there are two options, I'm just going to have general discussion first, and then we'll decide which one we're going to, there's, someone wants to put it on the table. So I have Claire queued up, take it away.
Thank you. Well, actually, I thought this would be on our agenda for a decision a little bit further out, and I might have time to watch the work session that I missed on this. And since I didn't, your recap was a little too brief for me. And I'm wondering if you would be willing to just briefly share why the original motion was now changed to these, one of these two options?
Well, we, some of the feedback that we heard, and, and I'll let the councilors that had some of those concerns articulated as well, but I think what we heard were some concerns about why this level of investment in this park, as compared to maybe how park funds are invested in parks in other parts of the community. And so we listened to that, and that's why we came back with a shift in supporting it more with urban renewal funds as opposed to park SDC funds. We did talk quite a bit about how this park is considered to be somewhat unique in that it's a regional park amenity, it's considered to be a destination, it's a little different than what you might experience in your districts and, as neighborhood parks, and the fact that we're in a unique situation, that we have access to urban renewal funds to make this kind of an investment, to, to make this park be what it is that we heard from the community, what their interests were in it being.
So would it be accurate to say that based on council discussion, you decided instead of utilizing park SDC funds for some, for about 3 million of this, you were suggesting we shift that cost burden to the Urban Renewal District?
Yes, that's what's being proposed.
Okay. That is all I needed. Thank you.
Any other comments? Jennifer?
I just wanted to thank staff for bringing back this proposal, whether it passes or not. I think option B is a good choice. I think we've recognized that in our communities, how important park space is, it's not just a piece of land, it has effects on people's lives, and, and studies are now showing us how, how important those spaces are for us. And that's why we count on our Parks Department to do such a good job, and they do. And I think that this new option is a reflection of that, and I really appreciate you taking the time to come up with another alternative. Thank you.
Any other comments, questions about this? No? Betty?
So option A is spending a total of 9 million, and option B is 12 million, is that correct?
That's correct.
Of urban renewal dollars, the total amount is the same, but of urban renewal.
But if we did option A, where would the other money come from? From park SDCs?
Yes.
As, as you proposed last time?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
So I'm going to propose that we put option B on the table unless I get a sense from the table that's not what you want. Okay? And, yes, yes, no? Option B? Open to comments?
I was going to say option A.
Well, well, that's, I'm looking for a sense, because I'm not going to, I'm not planning to vote on them sequentially, and so I'm just looking for a head nod that, are you prepared to do that? B, okay. And you're saying B, and you're saying B, and you're saying B. Okay. So if you would, Betty, put option B on the table.
I'll do that. I move to authorize the use of 8 million Riverfront Urban Renewal Funds for the parks and 4 million for the Plaza.
Second. All in favor? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, none opposed, and that passes. Thank you very much. And then there's a second motion?
Another motion. I move to direct the agency director to come back to discuss funding strategies for other potential projects within the Riverfront Urban Renewal District.
Second. All in favor? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, none opposed, and that passes. Thank you very much. And I also appreciate staff coming back with an alternative that is more comfortable and seems like a good solution. Thank you for that. And with that, I close the Urban Renewal Agency and reopen the City Council meeting. So, next up, Highway 99, Bethel Urban Renewal District. Welcome.
Good evening. Cass is getting that PowerPoint set up.
Okay, great.
I have more time than I expected.
Doesn't mean you have to use it all.
So we're here this evening to respond to a poll from Councilor Evans about urban renewal in the Bethel area. Let's see. Make sure this works. There we go. Councilor Evans' original poll asked staff to address these issues and questions that are listed on the screen. I'm not going to read them out loud to you. We are going to cover these topics this evening to work to address those questions. First, I want to walk through some basic demographics about Bethel, so that you all have a common understanding of the area. Then I'll review the planning documents that affect Bethel, then we'll walk through some basics about urban renewal, and then what an urban renewal district could look like in the Bethel neighborhood. We've used the neighborhood boundary for the active Bethel citizens' neighborhood. The neighborhood covers the area west of Highway 99, all the way over to Green Hill Road, and from Clear Lake Road on the north edge down to the train tracks that lie south of Roosevelt. The active Bethel citizens' neighborhood is the largest neighborhood in Eugene by geography. You can see on the map that it takes up a big chunk of the whole town. It includes a wide variety of land uses. This zoning map shows that the Highway 99 corridor is predominantly commercial and industrial. Along Roosevelt, it is industrial, but the most common land use is low-density residential. About half of the whole neighborhood is low-density residential. And so we did a very quick look at some demographics to describe Bethel. This chart shows the population breakdown by age. The green bar in the chart is the Bethel neighborhood. The bottom set of numbers show the portion of the population that is younger than 19 years. This shows that there's a higher portion of families in Bethel than citywide, and given the age breakdown of the adults, they are more likely to be young families. There's also a much lower portion of individuals aged 20 to 24 than citywide, and that shows that college students are not choosing to live in the Bethel neighborhood. Home ownership is much higher in Bethel than citywide. 61% of Bethel homes are owner-occupied compared to 49% citywide. Bethel has a higher portion of Latinos. About, almost 15% of Bethel residents identify as Hispanic or Latino compared to just over 5% across all of Eugene. Bethel has a relatively high portion of households that have lower-middle incomes, between $25,000 to $50,000. Bethel also has a relatively high portion of household with incomes between $50,000 and $75,000 a year. That gap, that chunk of incomes has actually been increasing, so incomes have been rising in the Bethel neighborhood. One reason incomes are in the lower end of the spectrum is that education levels are relatively low in Bethel. A college degree is less common in Bethel than across Eugene. This chart shows median home values. The green is Bethel and blue is Eugene metro. Bethel's home values are about $70,000 lower, the median value is about $70,000 lower than citywide. And so this very brief look at demographics and some market data indicate that Bethel is a neighborhood full of families. Their incomes are relatively low, but the incomes appear to be rising. Housing prices are relatively low, so it's a good place for a young family to buy its first home. Now, I'm going to go over the planning documents that affect Bethel. There are existing plans that are specific to the Bethel neighborhood. An interesting one is, as we prepared for this work session, we tracked down information about the 1970 Danabo Neighborhood Development Program. It's the item, the first one on the list. This program used one-time federal HUD urban renewal funds to revitalize a small area in the neighborhood. This blue rectangle shows where it was. It was about nine blocks just north of Barger Drive. The conditions of the area were quite blighted, with no roads and no sewers, and the development program installed infrastructure, it built a small park, and it developed housing. Let's see, the other, I'm not going to walk through all of these plans, but I want to focus a little bit on the Build a Better Bethel Plan. The city worked with Bethel residents and property owners throughout 2014 to focus on promoting economic development, and the report was completed in 2015. The task team for Building a Better Bethel identified a vision for the neighborhood. They identified a need for more services to serve the residents. Their vision was to create an area where everything is right here. They were particularly interested in having more food-oriented businesses. The report, the plan reported that Bethel is perceived as a less desirable neighborhood. The report stated that the negative perceptions are reinforced by the underutilization and underdevelopment of property along Highway 99. 99 is a major corridor, it's a gateway for folks coming to Eugene from the airport, and there is a lot of room for improvement. Urban renewal is a tool that could help address this underutilization of property along that highway. All of the citywide planning documents also affect land use and infrastructure in Bethel. And we made this map that shows all of the different planned infrastructure projects that will happen in Bethel from all of the different plans. The orange dots show the location of proposed park amenities. All of the blue dots and red dashlines are planned bicycle and pedestrian projects. And then I've circled these and pointed out, these are streets that will be repaved between this year and 2023. Another plan that will affect Bethel is the Moving Ahead Planning Process for Transit. Highway 99 is one of the key corridors that they're looking at, and the planning project is in process now, so it's not yet known what will be recommended for the Highway 99 corridor, but implementation of that Moving Ahead work would be a good use of urban renewal as well. So now I want to go over some basics about urban renewal in Oregon. You will all be getting more detailed information, more detailed discussion of urban renewal as part of the upcoming Budget Committee process, so I'm going to do this very, very lightly. First of all, urban renewal is a state-enabled program. It's used all across Oregon, over 50 cities and counties use urban renewal. At a very high level, urban renewal area has a plan that documents planned improvements, including parks and streets and parking structures, among many other things. The improvements are intended to stimulate private investment and attract new businesses, new jobs, and new residents. The improvements are financed with revenue generated from tax increment financing, or TIF. TIF is the heart of urban renewal. It is the financial tool that pays for all of the improvements. And so we've got a graph here just to help you to show how TIF works. On the vertical axis, we have tax revenue, and on the horizontal axis, we have time. When a district is first created, there's a certain amount of assessed property value within that district boundary. This is the frozen base, which is represented by that green arrow. Property taxes on the frozen base continue to go to the overlapping taxing districts throughout the life of the district. The value of the district grows above that base, frozen base amount. That increase is called the incremental value. Property taxes on the incremental value are redirected to the urban renewal district. When an urban renewal district terminates, the tax increment revenue reverts back to the overlapping taxing districts. In Bethel, the largest overlapping taxing districts are the Bethel School District, the City of Eugene, and the county. So tax increment financing in urban renewal is not an additional tax, but rather a redistribution of taxes. The overlapping districts get taxes from the assessed value of the frozen base, and the urban renewal district gets taxes from the incremental growth. No property inside or outside, the district pays more or less in taxes. Local governments have a mix of tools to use to encourage private investment and enhance the quality of life for their residents. TIF is just one of those tools. It's a very useful tool to focus public funds onto a specific area with the intent to catalyze more investment. State statute identifies what can be funded by TIF. Your AIS lists all the authorized uses, but I'm going to review those that are most commonly used by Oregon urban renewal agencies. And we have a lot of good examples of TIF being used in Eugene. We have rehabilitated underutilized buildings. And here's the Broadway Commerce Center after it's been rehabilitated. Eugene has acquired and sold real property, turning an empty pit and a service parking lot into LCC's new downtown center. One of the most basic but important things that TIF can be used for is the construction of infrastructure, and this is, of course, the fiber network being installed, one of my favorite infrastructure projects. So what does a community need to do to create an urban renewal district? State statute spells out all the requirements, and there are a lot of Ts to cross and a lot of Is to dot. At a very high level, here's some basic steps. Identify the general Identify the general area and the types of investments that TIF could fund. This requires a lot of planning and a lot of community outreach. Identify also the specific geographic boundary of the district, its frozen base, and then calculate the projected increment revenue. And then you write that all up in an urban renewal plan, and you adopt it. This is a very simplistic description. In practice, the process is not so simple. A community should expect to take at least 18 months to do that planning work, along with substantial staff time and consultant costs. We wanted to give council a very rough idea of what an urban renewal district in Bethel along the Highway 99 corridor could look like. And so we ran numbers on this hypothetical boundary. The gray area is what we included in this hypothetical urban renewal district. It includes all the properties that lie adjacent to Highway 99, and then also the properties along Barger on the north side between 99 and the Beltline intersection. We aren't suggesting that this should be a district. We just wanted to run some preliminary numbers to give you a sense of how much increment that district would generate. This area contains about $127 million in taxable value, which would be a frozen base. This table gives you a rough idea of the kind of incremental tax revenue that that district boundary could generate. The amount is pretty small in the early years because the increment is small, but it grows over time. This is a very conservative estimate because these numbers only include that 3% growth that Oregon's tax laws allow properties to grow every year. Any new development that created new taxable value is not included in these numbers. This table shows the annual amount. By year 10, the total amount directed to the district would add up to about $3.5 million. By year 20, the district would have accumulated about $14.5 million. To effectively encourage redevelopment of an area, we have learned it's good to have a whole toolbox of tools, and urban renewal is just one of those tools. One important tool is a solid neighborhood plan, like we're creating in the River Road, Santa Clara area now. The Bethel neighborhood is in the queue to have neighborhood planning work conducted. That planning work can lead to changes in zoning, which can be an important step to changing development patterns. Another tool includes MPT, which could be used in Bethel. We also have the federal opportunity zone. The, the black hashed areas are the opportunity zones in Eugene. One of them covers a chunk, the southeastern chunk of the Bethel neighborhood. And another tool is our enterprise zone, and that's that green area. It encourages investments that create jobs, and our enterprise zone covers the portion of Bethel that is zoned for industrial uses. These tools can be combined with affordable housing funding, as well as business loans, to focus redevelopment in Bethel. And with that, we'd like to end the presentation and answer any questions you have.
Wow, that was fast. Deep information, delivered incredibly quickly. Thank you. So I have Greg in the queue, Emily in the queue. Okay, take it away, Greg, and Chris.
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. I don't have any questions. Thank you for the presentation. I think it was very comprehensive and kind of got to the heart of what I'm trying to get to with regard for development, economic development in the Bethel area. If you look back a few slides and you look at where we were back in, slide 15, where we're talking about specific planning for the, for the neighborhood. You can see the last, last times that we've had specific plans, go back 35, 40 years, maybe longer than that, with the State Streets Urban Renewal District going back to 1970. That's what created the park, what gave people roads and sidewalks over there. Bethel Refinement Plan hasn't, we haven't had one since 1975 and 1982. And we need every part of the toolbox, and this is not just for the residents of Bethel. This is for the whole city. Because as Bethel goes, I believe that's the way the rest of the city goes. And we need to have some specific public investment to leverage private investment in the area. And the only way that that's going to happen is if we really kind of open up the toolbox and look to addressing some of the key issues around urban blight, which most of us around this table can say without a doubt that Highway 99 has had, has been in need of a large facelift for a long, long time. Secondly, our projections for growth in job areas, specifically out Highway 99, and are, we're looking at over, I think it's a 20-year period of adding another 9,800 jobs in that area. I don't know how we're going to get there without specific public investment. And we also have issues with a growing family base in the area, of the fact that we only have really a couple of, you know, outlets in order to service our food needs. We don't have sit-down restaurants. We've got everything that, that you can have under the sun that is fast food. We need diversity in terms of our economic development profile. And so I just strongly urge my colleagues to take a good, long look at how we, we have used urban development in other parts of the city, and look at using urban development where it's really needed.
Thank you. Emily?
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation and the, the big thing we got in our blue pages. It's really impressive. I like the plans. I think they're good and well-thought-out, and they can make a big difference. However, I do not like urban renewal funds. So my big question, we didn't get it today, but this graph. I don't understand how we're going to pay for the stuff that would have been paid in the black triangle above, because inflation happens. And so for all of these years, we've got a stagnant tax base to work on. What's going to replace that urban renewal money?
For the overlapping taxing districts?
In whatever the boundaries of the urban renewal district are, there will be requirements for money, and they won't be getting any more because all the inflation and increased value of their assessments will go to the urban renewal. So how do we pay for the things there that we would have paid with the urban renewal district money? Because we're not keeping up with inflation for the projects we're already doing.
Yeah, I don't know if we know specifically, but I think your point is well-made, that any increase in value that would have gone to the general fund would stay in this particular district for some specific types of projects, which could be very valuable for redevelopment. So I don't know how much that would be or what specific mechan, or what the trade-off funding would be for that. I think it would be general fund dollars of some sort, but we don't, we just don't know what that is over time, what that would look like, and what the needs are.
So not only are we not getting those taxes, but we're going to cover them from the general fund. So the general fund's getting hit twice.
Well, what we don't, well, what we don't know is the taxes will, will invest in the district. We don't know what cost there would be that would have to now also be covered somewhere else that those taxes would cover.
There will be something.
Yeah, because that money's not available for general fund purposes. That's true.
Which includes the same area.
It could, yeah.
And I get, we'll get more money in the long term. I get that part, but in the meantime, we've got the general fund paying for it, and people already want the general fund to play, pay for the libraries and the parks and transportation and safety, and we keep having to have bonds and levies for that. So this doesn't really seem fair to me, and I don't like it downtown or the riverfront, so I don't think I'm picking on Bethel. But I don't see how we keep up with everything. I think it, it robs the whole city in the present. I would like to find different funding. Thanks.
Okay, Chris?
Thank you. Appreciate the, the report. And, and I think what we're getting at, to some degree, is a question of, of where we make our priorities and our commitments. I mean, tax increment financing is a way for a city to say, we want to make a commitment to a certain area, knowing we're going to take money out of the main bank account and put it in the build a fence account, so we don't have it in the main account. It's only in the build a fence account because I want to build a fence. And so the question is, am I committed to building that fence enough to take money out of my regular bank account and put it into the build a fence account, or am I not? And I can remember Brian Obi, when he was mayor, back in the 80s, had a six-point Improve Eugene Plan. I call it the Eugene Agenda. And one of those six items was Improve Highway 99. And through his work and others, the street was improved. And then a lot of the improvements you see on Highway 99 were the result of that Eugene Agenda. But since that time, nothing else has happened. Highway 99 has sat there undeveloped for 20-some-odd years, which says to me, if you just leave it alone and say it'll take care of itself, it doesn't. And so it's a matter of if I just, if my fence is falling down and I don't put money in a build a fence account, then the fence will just lay on the ground forever. And, and I think if we say, well, let's leave it alone, Highway 99 will take care of itself, I don't think it will. I think it's going to require some sort of an effort to do that. Now, the question is, are we sufficiently committed to Highway 99 to be willing to take money out of the main account and put it in the Highway 99 account? And my question is, if it's, if it's a huge amount of money, even I would question that. But if you're talking about taking a relatively small amount in a very small part, so we're not talking huge amounts of money here, and put it in that Highway 99 account, knowing it's just going to be used to help make Highway 99 better after 20-some-odd years, maybe that is something to think about. So it's, for me, less about the tool. I'm moving it from this account to this account. That in and of itself is not inherently bad, if I'm willing to take it out of this account because this account is important enough for me to put money in it. And so we shouldn't do it unless we think this is an important account to put it in. And I think that's the central question we should talk about. Is Highway 99's improvement important enough to be willing to pull money from the main account to put it into a Highway 99 account?
Okay, Mike?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm glad Slide 19 is up here. That's what I was going to ask. First of all, I, I entirely agree with an awful lot of folks who, who aren't big fans of tax increment financing. I'm a fan of the tool itself. I have always said that I, I think there's nothing wrong with the tool. I think we just use it the wrong way in Eugene. And I would, I would, I guess the right word is push back a little on my, on my friend. That base amount right there, the maximum that could go up every year is 3%. And if the value of the property from us doing nothing goes down, then it's very likely that the taxes collected in that area could, at least hypothetically, go down and not go up at all, and we'd be getting less and less every year from that area while the needs would be increasing. But my problem with how we use this is that you've drawn an accurate graph of where we'd like to be, and that's the whole point. We're borrowing against tomorrow. And the blue bar is assuming we do so much work that the value of the area goes up so much on new construction and new things that are happening, that we'll collect an awful lot more in the way of property taxes at some point in the future from the new development. And I think that's a perfectly good goal. The problem is, we spend urban renewal money on public projects and never private ones. And that's not what the tool is for. The tool was built to spend on private projects to increase the taxable value over time, and that graph represents it. Because private property doesn't get to be that much more valuable without the efforts at urban renewal, and that's the point. But if we spend all the money on public programs only or public projects, we don't see the same increase in the value of the overlying, surrounding property, which is the whole point of borrowing it and doing it that way in the first place. And I agree with Greg that this is, this is an area that's been sad, and with Chris, that this area's been sadly neglected for way, way too long. And I, I know that there are an awful lot of folks in town who you wouldn't normally think of as advocates for Highway 99, who absolutely are. There are an awful lot of business owners who have said to me over time that they would do anything to see us improve 99 and are standing ready to help. So I, I'm really looking forward to the opportunity for us to do this because I think there's not as much public infrastructure that needs to get done, so we're not likely to spend it that way, which would be wrong, in my opinion. And there, there's an opportunity for us to really move that area forward and increase our tax base.
Betty?
Oh, thank you. Some people say that we don't pay for, that we don't pay anything for urban renewal. I would suggest you look at your property tax bill, and you will see urban renewal taxes on the bill. I know sometimes you don't look, you just pay it, but we do, we do all pay for it. And it is a diversion of money. It doesn't bring new money. Theoretically, it ends someday, but look at the, how, how long have we had the downtown urban renewal district? It never ends. It's been, do you know how many years?
Many decades. Many decades.
Many decades. It always gets extended. Supposedly, it ends someday, and then you have the increased value, and that goes into the general fund. But in Eugene, it never ends. Other places, it ends. And it is, it's a way to divert money from city, county, schools. And I think if we were going to spend a lot of money on Highway 99, it should go on the ballot and let the public vote for it. Thank you.
Okay. Claire?
Thank you. Well, I want to thank Council Evans for bringing this work session forward. I participated in the Build a Better Bethel planning and agree with what Council Clark said, that there are an awful lot of people just waiting for some activity. They need help from their city government to try to bring some improvements to this part of town. A large portion of what was shown as a potential urban renewal district is actually in my ward, so I don't have very much of Bethel in my ward, but I have some. And so I'm definitely interested in exploring this conversation further and more deeply. You know, we could try to tackle some of the things, some of the recommendations that were made in the Better Bethel Report, with a little bit of general fund money here and a little bit of park SDCs there. And we might do some, you know, minor beautification enhancement projects, which was discussed on a tour that we took a couple of years ago with one of those community members who's interested in improving the area. But I think if we are really, as Chris's saying, willing or interested in making a commitment, then I think we do need to look at other mechanisms. And I can definitely be critical of urban renewal. I can be critical of MPT. But I think there are appropriate times to look at these mechanisms and study them to see if they're the right way to bring that level of commitment. And I don't think staff said it wasn't paid for by community members. I think she said it's not a new tax. So if it's a line item on our tax bill, if it wasn't there, it would just be in the general tax that we were getting. It would still be on our bill. It's just parsed out as showing that it's going to the urban renewal. But I do agree that, you know, our current urban renewal district should end at some point, and I could definitely see if we went down this road, that the Highway 99 work would have an end, as long as we dug into it and got it started. I think the reason downtown continues forever and ever is because for a long time, nothing was done with it. And I also appreciate Council Clark's comments about private investment, and I think this corridor in particular, that would really, I think, need to be the focus. So if we look at this and we're willing to do it, we, that would, I think, need to be part of the commitment, and I'd definitely be open to the idea of putting it out for a vote to the community.
Any, any other comments? Manager? Alan?
I was just going to suggest a, a next step if people want to do it, so I'll wait till the end.
I was just going to say, this is a great plan. The folks that put this together, a lot of effort and work went into this. There's a lot of good stuff in here, and if there, this is a part of town that I agree has been neglected and needs some help in, in terms of attention from the city, in terms of funding these things. And, and I agree, we should try to do that, and we should look at all the different mechanisms that we can. that we can. Except I'm not a fan of urban renewal districts. So I like the plan. I like what we're trying to do. I don't like the, this particular mechanism.
I just have a question, and then I'll turn it over to you, which is, I think it would be, it would be helpful in the, you've listed the other mechanisms, and I guess it would be sort of helpful, just as you have done with other things, to give us some sense of what is the potential in terms of what kinds of dollars would we expect to leverage, you know, through some of those other mechanisms? Like, how productive are they? Because my sort of initial assumption is that the urban renewal district, you actually leverage more money and you leverage it sort of more directly and simply. But it would be good to know what a package would look like or what some of the other options are as a point of comparison. So that would just be my request on the coming back.
I was going to say, one of the things we can do to come back is also, next time, talk about sort of what is the scope of the work when you, when you create something like this? It's a lot of work, and so if there is the commitment, we would want the commitment before we do all that work, but we can come back and talk about, so here's what the kind of work would be. We can come back with some additional information on some of the other tools and put those together. And that, I'll just give you more information on deciding, so what do you do with all that? And do you want to move forward or not, or now, or some other time? And we're, we can do that.
And while we're talking about that commitment of work, that other question of how many things can we do and where this fits sort of in the lineup of neighborhood improvement efforts?
Yeah, and that's why I think we, if we scope out the work, that also will give a sense of how much effort it is, and then we can talk about where that fits. If that would be helpful.
I think it would. In fact, I think a critical part of any urban renewal conversation is, what will the money specifically be used for? I know whenever I've been involved in any urban renewal conversation in the past, it always revolves around, you're not just raising money to put into the bank. It's for a specific purpose. And the last time we had the downtown urban renewal conversation, we identified six specific things that this money was deemed to be worth spending on. Because I would agree, there's no point in having it if you don't have a good use for the money. And I would be resistant to having it just, just to collect money because you are taking it out of the main account. But if you can identify worthwhile projects, then that is really the reason to have the conversation. So I would absolutely go in that direction because whether it's 600,000 or 1.5 million, I need to know that it would go to a good purpose, that it would build something that either you couldn't otherwise build, or it would leverage money that could let you build something more than you could build before. I can remember somebody, I watched a show once where they said, the director of the U.S. Patent Office, and I think this was in 1903, said, okay, let's close the Patent Office, we don't need it anymore. Everything that's ever going to be invented has been invented. We don't need, we don't need it anymore. And, and I think we need to remember that as long as there are worthwhile projects, then you need a way to fund it. When we run out of worthwhile projects, then I agree, you don't need the funding mechanism anymore. And the last urban renewal conversation where we identified six worthwhile projects was the only reason I was supportive of continuing the district. So that's why I think how you use the money is an extremely integral part to the conversation about whether you want to collect that money in the first place. Not whether or not it's there, it's are you using it for a good purpose?
Greg?
And to Chris's comment, I've spoken with several people in the business community who have talked about what the potential is for development on four corners, which is, if you go out there, you can see there is potential for private development there. There's potential for private development where the old arc was. There's several corners along Highway 99 that can and should be developed, as well as multi-unit housing. There's potential for that as well. But we're not going to be able to do that without some investment and some, you know, basically some investment from the city. The city's got to show that it cares. And it cares about every part of the community, not just some parts of the community.
Alan?
Could you go back to the last slide? Last three slides, actually.
The one showing the map of the hypothetical district?
Stop there. So that, no, not that.
The table.
No, going to the, to the tools, yeah. So we have these tools. MPT, it's in the train song, but not all the way up. Corridor, right?
It's only, it's only in downtown now. The state statute says it can be used in a city core or along transit corridors. So it could be used along, anywhere along 99.
Train song at all. So that's an existing tool.
And actually, I can't answer. It says along transit corridors. I don't know how wide that boundary would be. It'd be something to look into.
On this map, it's about that much.
Yeah.
So there's the opportunity zone, the enterprise zone, business loan program, affordable housing programs, and MPT. And so the next, next slide has those zones, and then the next one actually. So it would be good to know what, how those operate, what they can do, what their potential is, and how they would operate within existing boundaries of what we can do within them. And, and so that'd be, I think that would be a good thing to know. And I like the idea of having a very specific plan. Is that what you were thinking about? Is, when we did this before, it was a very specific, we looked at a whole bunch of things, and then we narrowed down to like six things that were going to be forwarded on the.
Yeah, I think what we would do is, before we even get to that step, is sort of scope out all the different things that would have to get done because that would have to be a conversation here. Eventually, we could come back with recommendations based on conversations in the neighborhood and the, and the other plans. But I don't think that's the next step. I think we need to say, here's what the work is. How much time and capacity will that require of us? Or does that fit in the overall scheme of planning? And then start moving down that if we choose to move down that.
So you're talking about scoping out the amount of work.
Yeah.
Timeline it would take to create an.
Yeah, yes, that's what we're.
Then talk about what we do once we did it. But not necessarily create it and then figure it out.
No, because I think we could, we could literally spend hundreds of hours, putting together a lot of information, and there isn't yet. Everybody said, yes, let's go do that. And so before we start doing that, we'd want to come back and have the council say, yes, we're committed to moving forward on that kind of work.
Yeah, so when you bring that back, and I think that's a good idea, so part one would be figuring out the urban district, but part two would be figuring out what you would do there and what the projects would be. So I would like to see both parts of that. Not what's in it, not what the projects are, but how long it would take, what the resources are required to do that kind of thing. So it's basically a project scoping document and budget timeline and figure it all out.
I just want to make sure I understand. And so it wouldn't be identifying, here's, we're going to do something on four corners, but it would be a part of that is, we need to figure out what the projects are.
Yeah, what it takes to figure out that.
Yes, got it. All right.
Right? It's take, you know, six months, these many.
Got it.
Public involvement processes, four staff people to do this forever.
Yeah.
Or one to do it for.
Or, yeah, something.
For the next 20 years.
He ends full employment.
That's right.
We got to start somewhere.
We do.
And how fast can we get fiber out there?
Okay. Eddie?
Thank you. When you say that we continue because there's more projects, there will always be more projects that need to be done, so we'll never end. But when you say, when we talk about good places for private investment, then maybe some private investor will invest there. If you, people who believe in private enterprise, why wouldn't somebody, if it's a good place for investment, why wouldn't somebody eventually invest there when they don't find another place to invest? Thank you.
Is that an open question?
An open question, yeah. Yeah. All right. I guess, I guess we're good to go? Any other comments?
Yeah, what we'll do is, we'll, we'll also think about when we bring this back. It's not going to be immediately. We'll, we'll have to kind of think through that a little bit based on the workload that others have to be able to scope these things out, too. And we'll come back and let, we'll keep people up to date on that, too, so.
No, we're not definitely going forward. We're getting more information.
Yeah, we're just going to provide more information. We haven't taken it that you've said yes to moving forward on urban renewal district. We just want to provide more information so eventually you can, you can choose to which path you want to take.
And that includes looking at the other ways of investing in the area.
Yeah.
So it's the whole scope. Okay. Thank you very much, and we are adjourned until 7:30.